The exact written guidance that schools have received, just so that everybody is on the same page. And so from a calendar perspective, we start initial planning for the budget in October. We begin approaching the subject with school leaders in November. We review and refine guidance in December. Budgets come from school leaders, or requests come from school leaders, the end of this week. And so generally in December, before we break for the winter, for the winter break. And then we start reviewing all of their requests. We start looking at alignment. We start looking for redundancies because we want to make sure that we're not wasting dollars between operations and between schools and curriculum. And then we wait because we will not actually receive state funding until probably mid to late February. And so all the while, we're continuing to make sure that we are getting feedback from our schools, from our school leaders, to make sure that what they are requesting, we can continue to advocate for, cost out, and making sure that we have an accurate assessment of the finances. And so we felt that it was important to just kind of share just the overarching guidance. We start with making sure that all of the decisions that all schools are making are aligned to our mission and our vision. And then we specifically are making sure that they understand who they're budgeting for. And so in this environment, student-based budgeting is the strategy. And all student-based budgeting means this is that the funding follows the student and that the needs of the student drive the changes or proposed changes or supports that schools are to put in place. And so from September to November, it's really informing about the cycle, giving a preview of what schools should expect. December and January is really getting granular based on what schools have requested, making sure that we, as a district, clarify. In February, continue to, in partnership with our board, to talk about the finances, where we are, where we believe we may be in terms of the projections while we wait for state aid. And then once we receive state aid, we finalize some of those budget decisions in partnership with the board and then get prepared for the March submission to the state. With pending that approval, the board would then review, final review, and then actually approve the budget in April. And so the guidance that we give to schools are first to identify their budget priorities. Second, make sure that they inform their school community about their process, what they're prioritizing, and how programs and services will be determined. Continue review and analysis of student data, making sure that we are continually aligning staffing to student needs, and then taking an individualized approach. And so no two schools are the same, and therefore no two school budgets are going to be the same because the conditions in which they operate are going to look different. The needs of their students are going to look different. And we want to make sure the schools have the latitude and the flexibility to make those decisions. We also want them to focus on solutions, making sure that everything from their learning schedule to the delivery of services is student-facing. And we want to maximize funding whenever and wherever possible. And so when we get additional funds, whether they be in grant dollars or rebates or distributions that come back due to some of the partnerships that we have in the form of dividends from our insurance, we want to make sure that we are maximizing those dollars to support students. Focusing on student needs, prioritizing academic achievement, making sure that student voice and choice drives many of the decisions. And so in December, in January, we conduct focus groups with every single school. And so we've already conducted the focus groups at the middle and the high school. Starting in January, we will conduct focus groups, students in grades three, four, and five, in every elementary campus. We get lots of very valuable but interesting feedback from our third, fourth, and fifth graders. Much of their feedback is really around the overall experience. And we want to make sure that their ideas materialize. And so we share all of this feedback with our school leaders with an expectation that action takes place based on what our kids are saying. We're constantly looking at enrollment, whether enrollment is up or down. And then we're also constantly looking at, are the supports, programs, and services that are in place, are they meeting the needs of our students? And if not, what adjustments need to be made? Or what new programs or what new services need to be provided in order to fill such gaps? In addition to looking at any discretionary spending, so given each school's context, how are we maximizing those resources? How are we leveraging those resources in the form of instructional materials, field trips, and experiential learning for our students? Student enrichment, after-school clubs, guest speakers, family engagement events, and then overall staff support? And then making sure that we continue to coordinate with departments to be able to maximize the dollars that are being spent. And then empowering our schools to be innovative whenever and wherever possible. And so in terms of the overarching priorities from a district perspective, improve the alignment of the administrative teams, making sure that roles and responsibilities are aligned with the goals and objectives for all of our schools. Actively engage our communities as it relates to system challenges, infrastructure challenges, budgetary challenges. Continue to identify strategies to secure adequate school funding. Actively pursue additional revenue streams to support student learning. And then commit to retaining our dedicated faculty and staff. In area of curriculum, continued implementation of the science of reading. Improving the quality of teaching and learning, making sure that we're maximizing the effectiveness of our existing curriculum and resources. Building leadership capacity to support instruction in the classroom. And then building district capacity to support inclusive schools. While also making sure that we refine and improve our targeted support in literacy and mathematics. Specifically as it relates to pre-K through five, increasing access to high-quality preschool seats for all Oakland families. That's going to be a rolling agenda and a continued push until we get to universal levels. And then also maintaining our multi-tiered system of support for students. And so we will be releasing this information, we'll be sending it out this week to make sure that it's in the hands of our community. In addition to a call to action, where in January, there will be opportunities for public comment at the state level, looking at the school funding formula. And we are going to be asking our community to join us in the efforts of advocating for fair funding for all of our schools. Thank you.
The, I just wanted to add the link for the hearing on the state funding formula is on the website. I added it to both the Collingswood, not me, the tech team added it to the Collingswood and Oakland websites last night. So if somebody wants to register to testify or register to be present or submit a statement on behalf of the schools and in support of us, they can do that. So it's on the website.
Are any of the administrators planning to speak at this point? Are you planning to speak?
I don't know, only because it's the 16th and it's, January is a crazy month with having RYOARG meetings. Like, we have six meetings out that week. But I will say, I said this last night at the Oakland Board meeting, so Rich has heard this already. My state association, the accountability regulations that govern pretty much how we manage the school district and our finances, those regulations sunset in June. So they allow public comment, or like the state associations, they allow people to comment on the regulations before they were reauthorized by the government. I sat on a committee at my state association and we spent countless hours going through about 300 pages of regulations, making comment. Unfortunately, Trenton did not accept one comment that we made. And some of the comments with that, I'll point out, I thought were very reasonable. You know how I feel about the 2%? And that in some cases it handicaps the school districts because CPI and cost of living is way above 2% right now and we're still held to a 2% cap on what we can ask for that was set in 2008. So 16 years is, I think it's about, it's about time. But the argument we made was at least the cost drivers that are in direct control of the state of New Jersey and the Department of Education, that they pass on to us. Those things like out-of-district tuition costs that Trenton literally, they publish the tuition rates. Trenton sets the tuition rates, they just pass it on to us. And the transportation costs that they've allowed to just run amok in the state. We asked for the ability, because I can prove, as you well know, anybody who sat in my finance committee, I can very well prove and I can show those cost drivers just going bananas in both Oakland and Collingswood. That even if those two large budgetary line items, if I was allowed to increase those above the 2%, we would have a little more grace within our budget. So that was the recommendation that we made and it was rejected by Trenton.
Or, or on the flip side, if they're making school districts cap at 2%, then those
Bingo, I forgot to say that. I said the same thing, yes. Because the private schools, they're kind of governed a little differently, but they do have, I guess, board directors. But they have to submit their request for tuition to Trenton and then Trenton approves it and then they publish the rates. So the same thing, I'm like, well, we have the board of that and we hold our spending and everything to 2%. They should do the same. And Trenton does not hold them to that, unfortunately. So again, all of our recommendations that came from a lot of seasoned business administrators who've been, I mean, I've been around for 30 years and, you know, a lot of my colleagues have a lot of experience as well. And our recommendations were flatly rejected by Trenton.
So in addition to that, the, there are multiple administrative associations. And so all of the superintendent associations for every county in New Jersey are all advocating. The New Jersey Association of School Administrators, which is also our state agency, are also advocating. In addition, there are some ad hoc organizations, ALAS, New Jersey ALAS, which is the Association of Latino Administrators, and the New Jersey Association of Black Superintendents are all, also advocating. And so every administrative entity in New Jersey is also pushing and lobbying with the state as well.
At this point, I have to check my schedule. If I, if I don't, I will probably submit a statement. And I do know you also sit on that group, but the, there's a local, do we have a name yet?
No name yet.
I just drew like an unnamed local advocacy group. It's headed by Kelly Hinkle, who's the president of Haddon Township. And she's put a bunch of like citizens in this direct little area between like Haddon Township, Collingswood, Oakland. I don't think anybody from Haddonfield because they don't have the same issues, but I forget who else is on there. But it's board members, it's admins like me, it's, you know, parents. And anybody who's just concerned about the state of the way we fund and help serve our children, we sit on it. So I know there's a meeting in January for schedule for that too.
They're also doing committee work at this point. So they're forming committees and like I'm sitting on the student committee as well as the storytelling committee because they're trying to find ways to make the case. This kind of came up very quickly though. So Kelly Hinkle has been mobilizing everyone. And I know that from the student committee's perspective, we want to reach out to the PTAs as well to try to get, you know, the student voice, the parent voice in this as well. So just an update on that. And can I say one more thing about the communication for going out to families next week? So I, thank you for putting that link on the website. That's easy to find. Finding how to, if you can't attend but still want to submit a comment is a little hard to find. It's all the way at the bottom. So I'm, I'm going to email you guys and I suggest maybe highlighting a link to that Google form where people can register to go or submit a comment. You can do both through that one link, so.
Fred, can I ask that you send the information you're sending to the parents? Could you also send it to the board members that don't happen to have children in school? Thank you.
All right, any more questions about the budget process? All right, moving on to section 3.02.
Fred's going to take over, unless you want to recognize yourself.
He knows.
You spoke before I had a chance to like jump on you and be like, don't talk. But yeah, Fred's going to say a few words, but we wanted just to take this time to thank both Denise and Amy for their service. These are unpaid jobs, they're thankless jobs, but you do it on behalf of your children and you do it very gracefully. And you've served Oakland very well. So I want to personally thank you. You will be missed, but I'm sure Fred also has some words. But we just wanted to recognize you with another plaque you can add to your house, but you know.
So yeah, we didn't want Denise to be schizophrenic and have to talk to herself about herself. And so, and so I want to echo what Beth Ann talked about. And so being a board member in 2024 is probably one of the most challenging and thankless, public-facing positions that one can have. And so I think it goes without saying that there is a shared commitment of all of the members on this dais of working together because we love our community and we love our kids. And so that self-sacrifice, when you're tired, when you are dealing with your own family issues, busy work life, you know, being a good parent, being a good neighbor, that has not gone unnoticed within our community. And the level of thoughtfulness, intentionality, and grace that you both have shown for several years in an extremely challenging time, has not only gotten the respect of our leadership team, but it's really gotten the respect of our entire community. And so we have a plaque just as a symbol, as a token, but we can't thank you enough. There's no amount of gift that would be sufficient for the level of investment and sacrifice that you both have made on behalf of the Oakland School District, on behalf of the children and families in Oakland. But we wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your service, thank you for your commitment, and don't be a stranger.
Beth Ann, do you mean to tell me we're not getting paid for this?
Bill, if you think you've been getting paid this whole time, I want to see your bank account, honey. That's all I'm saying.
He wants that 50 years of back pay.
I'm saving it up for one big payment.
So if I could too, I just want to take a moment to thank both Denise and Amy for your service and dedication to this board. It's been an honor to have both of you on. Your commitment, your dedication, you know, speaking without any reservation. I've always appreciated that. And Denise, it's been an honor to serve alongside of you as vice president. You've been committed to the district, to these children. Your decisions have always been given careful consideration and thought. And you've come on with no agenda, alter of motives, but you know, just wanting to do what's best for Oakland. So to Denise and Amy, again, both, I thank you both for your service. It's been an honor to have you guys on this board.
Thank you all very much. It's been an honor to be here. Thank you. All right, moving on to section four, Committee of the Whole. So motion to go on to Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Moved and seconded on favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now in Committee of the Whole. Does anyone have anything for Committee of the Whole? I feel like I had a note and I don't know where it is, so.
Oh, I happen to have a note.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
You've screwed up my whole, my whole system here. I was going to begin with thanking you for all of your service and now that's deflated. So I've got a, I've got a quick scramble to go to something else. One of the things I'd like to talk about is, is the committee system that we use. I don't know that it's effective. I don't know that Oakland, being a K to five school, really needs that. I think we, personally, I would like to see it as a Committee of the Whole. It would add time to the meetings, like tonight's meeting would be a little bit longer, but it would also free up a night where you wouldn't be going to the committee meetings. Problem I have with committee meetings is there are, you're on one of three committees. So you know exactly what's going on in one-third of the items, but we're asked to vote on all of the items. I, I think it would be better served if we discussed everything as a Committee of the Whole where everybody, you know, I could hear what Amy had to say and Amy could hear what I had to say. And it just, it may, something she says may bring up something that I hadn't thought of and maybe I could expand on that or something. I, I think we ought to look hard at doing away with our current committee system because I don't think it's effective. I don't think it provides the best information for the board. And we're, we're voting on things that we may not know a whole lot about.
I'll respond. So your appreciation of the choir and that I don't love tonight. However, I think in those meetings, first of all, the committee chairs do a nice job of following up with some high-level notes. And it's not to say we've disagreed, we have not openly disagreed on things in this room. However, if we're not in agreement in the committee meetings, I feel like that's a better place because then we have to present to our community that we're a board and we're aligned with stuff. And yes, there are times where there have been no votes and yes, votes for certain things publicly on YouTube in front of our guests or community members here. But I think there probably is something important to be done behind the scenes so that we present ourselves as a solid team. But I'm with you, like I don't love the two consecutive Tuesdays either. So I think I would be indifferent to whichever method we choose. But I, I think that that is an important place where we can vet some things out without the community saying, do they know what they're talking about? I think credibility is important and the optics of those disagreements. Not that we disagree frequently, but I think it's probably better to do in a small forum so that when we do present whatever, we decide the best outcome for the greater good, we, we're credible.
Do you think maybe the public would like to hear us discuss it where it's not all in agreement? Do you agree with everything you and your husband talk about?
I don't, no, I don't. And I don't even agree with everybody at the table at all times, like, and you guys know that. So I don't feel bad saying it, but at the same time, like, yeah, I do, there's something to be said where I think people do enjoy witnessing, not a confrontation, but making things uncomfortable. Because when something's uncomfortable, change can be made. If everybody was comfortable all the time, it wouldn't catalyze change for sure. But I don't know, like, those are just my thoughts on it. And we, and we get the summaries and yes, it's not the same as being in the room and hearing what led to those summaries. But I don't know, I see both sides of it. So that's just my two cents.
Can I, I
I would agree with that.
As your both secretary, can I give you my two cents? Only because I've, no, okay. Again, a couple of things. First, I want to say you do have a bylaw that if you want to go down this route, you know, you have to seat a new president, you know, you can't do anything tonight. You have a bylaw and it would have to be amended right now, you know. I don't know that there's a proposal to do that, but that would be the process. You have to, you know, engage your new president and have a discussion and publicly amend your bylaws to govern differently. That's number one. Number two, I have served in two capacities. My very first school district was a K to eight. And they did everything by Committee of the Whole. So the way it worked, you're still at two nights, folks. The first meeting in lieu of committee, it would be a Committee of the Whole where you go over every item on the agenda, but it's in public. And then you come back the next week and you do it all over again. So, so that's number, so the two nights, I don't know that's solving anything. But my only, having witnessed all of you for the last 11 years, there is value in the committee in that people are camera shy. I know Bill's not, and I'm not, you know, as you know, but some people, I want you, everyone, to be able to say exactly what's on their mind and not have it be out in the universe. You know, because I, it's happened in Collingswood where people get tongue-tied. Not so much in New York, but in the past, people got tongue-tied. So and when it's just three or four people and you're like arguing an issue or really getting like passionate, and we do sometimes because we're talking about children, we get very passionate about this. I just want to bring that to your attention, that, you know, sometimes, you know, it gets lost in translation. And sometimes we, we may say things that I got a quick say, stop talking, we have to go into closed session because we don't realize that we're bringing up things. You know what I mean? Especially during budget season, as you very well know, we go, we go everywhere during budget season. So talking about certain topics publicly, we may be in and out of closed session a lot as well. So I just wanted to, there's a lot to it, to, just to be considered. That's all.
That's what was going to be my question is could we do, I mean, I concur with Bill, I concur with Jen. But could we have the committee as a whole as closed session? The whole, the whole thing?
No. It would have to meet, which is why like you'd be coming in and out, right? As soon as like somebody says something inappropriate, I'm going to jump on you and say, shush. It would have to be one of the items that is listed that would make it a need to go into closed session, like legal, personnel, something violating someone's rights. So we would have to like zip it, go into closed session and give the, the public an estimate of the amount of time we're going to be in the other room and then come back, so, but yeah.
Yeah, the, now I've worked under both systems, so I've seen them both, how they work. I wouldn't do two nights with I wouldn't do two nights with the committee of the whole, I don't see any reason to do that. Some of the concerns about the, the discussions are, are valid concerns, but we don't often, and I'm talking of Oakland now, we, we don't often run into those things, and I'm not worried about the nights, because when I was Collinswood rep, uh, Rich can testify as to how many nights you're out, uh, in a month, and that, that doesn't bother me. I've done that for years. I don't miss meetings. I, I just don't. So I'm not worried about that. Um, I'm just worried about the, the discussions. I want everybody to know everything that's going on. We all have to vote on everything, and when we vote on it, it's, it's, this is what we're going to do, and I just want to feel that everybody understands that. The budget issues, you know, the budget issues are, are going to be the budget committee. Uh, we'll, we'll know exactly what's going on, but everybody else is limited to what we, we can think, tell them about, or what you guys can think to tell them about. So it's, it would be better, I think, if everybody understood the budgetary items that, that are being discussed, and the same way with, with curriculum. There's a lot of discussion on curriculum, uh, that, you know, you guys know what's going on, but the rest of the board may not know what's going on. We get to, we get to-
School policy.
Oh, your policy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Curriculum, who's curriculum? Oh, okay. Curriculum, uh, and policy is the same way. I mean, you know, you put down your policy, and, uh, that was one of the things I asked about too, if we could get the italicized form for the second reading so that we don't have to flip back and forth to, to figure.
I mean, that's a valid, valid question. I mean, what, I haven't, I, just thinking as a group, I think all of us on this board have unique talents, that's why we're all here, not all the same. I think committee structures work because you gather people who have either a very vested interest or a talent in these certain things so that they can be the experts, so that fellow board members can go to them with questions and what have you. I think it's completely valid that, especially when we're going into a budget review process that may be a bit difficult, as we've been surmising might happen in the coming year, that all voices need to be heard. I'm not sure if changing the whole, the whole meeting structure is necessarily a solution to that. Maybe there's other solutions, like, could we have special meetings for these things? Could we have another retreat? We did one retreat. Could we do multiple, where we're talking about these kind of bigger issues? I don't, there are agendas that don't warrant, you know, massive mulling over things, and there are ones that do. So I would rather seeing, see us putting together a structure where, you know, we're, everybody, we're delegating the work in a way that's manageable, because not everybody can go to four meetings a month. I mean, that's, again, maybe if they give us a raise, but I don't see that happening. And, but not with a 2% cap.
We can work on that.
But at the same time, we can, I think we definitely need to address the problems that you're bringing up, because then what does happen, tends to happen, is there's communications on the side, communications on email with only two people and what have you, so, and I've seen that as something that's challenging for me as a board member, because maybe I feel like I'm left out of some of the communications, maybe I have similar questions, so I think it's warranting a conversation, but I, I don't personally think that changing the entire meeting structure will solve all of those problems.
I mean, even more to what you said, like, I, I've been in a lot of committee meetings where we won't have an answer for something that night, right? And we have to wait that whole week before we can actually get an answer for, to be approved. So I think it would also delay, um, being able to approve things on, on the board nights. So as much as I agree with you, I think, I mean, that, that's a good point, so.
This is, this comes up, you know, like, every so often, uh, as we have new board members come and go and, and that type of thing. Um, you know, I, I've always been more of a mind, like Jen, where I think we need to, you know, always present a united front, right? And that doesn't mean we all have to vote the same way, and I'll often coach new board members with that same advice. To Teresa's point, you know, the, I, we do have a standing, uh, executive session on the agenda, so for those bigger topics, when it is budget season and that type of thing, we could plan to go into an executive session to discuss some of those bigger topics. The, the other thing too, um, just a thought, is, you know, a lot of times with our committee, the whole portion of our meeting, we kind of go into it like we did tonight, saying, anybody got any news? You know, but if, if we really want to maximize that time too, the, the president or whomever's floating through all the committee meetings, as they've done, um, you know, that could be an agenda item for our committees to say, like, are there questions or, or things that I should, as president, have put on the agenda for committee of the whole, based on the committee meeting? So that might help to focus these conversations as well and keep some of those other topics at the forefront a little bit more. I know for me personally, I never think of it that way when I'm in committee meetings, so I probably should start thinking that way and say, hey, can we put the, this topic or whatever on committee of the whole, just so we can talk a little bit deeper about it, um, and, and put it out there for the, for the board as a whole? Um, I think that would be a good use of that time.
I just want to add that the whole reason we started the, um, summaries of them was to sort of help with it, and maybe we just have to look at making sure that that's happening, and maybe what information is included in that versus what might not be included, just as a way to make sure that it is getting through, and if there is a need for further discussion, we have other tools. I'm also in support of the mini, the, the three committees.
Okay, that went over well.
Well, Bill, I think it was an important discussion, and I'm glad that you brought it up, and I think it is, I mean, in the seven years I've been on the board, we've gone back and forth several times with it. So I don't feel like it's, I don't feel like this is a irresolved thing, but maybe we need an action item as to what the next step would be. Do you want to add the bylaws question on to the January committee?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, once we have our leadership in place, we can, I think, really discuss this in, in January. Um, so once we have those people in place, I think we can really hit the ground running then.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else for committee of the whole? All right, is there a motion to come out of committee of the whole? So moved.
Second.
All right, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now moving on to section five, future dates. So this is information about what's coming up for the next month. Uh, there's some PTA events, which I'll skip. Um, the school is closed for winter break, um, from the 23rd, uh, through the 1st, and students return on the 2nd, and the board reorganization meeting is on January 7th at 6:30 here in the library. Moving on to section six, routine board business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's approved. Um, moving on to section seven, this is the first public comment section, um, so this is for items that are on the agenda only. Please stand, state your name and address, keep your comment, or comments to five minutes or less. You actually don't need to say your address if you don't want to. There's a piece of paper over there where you can write your address if you prefer that. All right, anyone have anything? All right, moving on. Section eight, this is the superintendent's report. Dr. McDowell.
Okay, uh, section 8.01 is the attached enrollment report. Enrollment for November of 2023 was 269. Enrollment of 2024, uh, November 2024 is 273. Uh, 8.02 and 8.04 and 8.05 are the school safety, anti-bullying, and CST quarterly reports, and all three of those are also attached.
All right, thank you. Um, are there questions on any of those items from board members? All right, moving on to section nine, uh, the business administrator report.
Okey-dokey. Um, 9.01 is a listing of your November 2024 monthly budgetary transfers. 9 port, 9.02 is your, um, financial report, so it's your board secretary and treasurer's report and all related financial backup. 9.03 is a listing of the purchase orders that were issued in the month of December. 9.04 is a listing of the warrants that will be paid tomorrow morning pending approval tonight.
Thank you. All right, section 10, finance committee, Mr. Jimmy.
Thank you, good evening. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Therese for, uh, sitting in for me. I was, uh, not, not here last week, so I'll stumble through this the best I can. Um, we're looking for approval on 10.01, the approval of budget transfers, 10.02 and 3, for the approval, approval of certifications and non-over expenditures, 10.04, the approval of secretary treasurer reports, 10.05 and 6 for the approval of purchase orders and warrants. Um, on 10.07, we're looking to accept $2,000 honorarium for the participation in the National Association of Nurses Research and Data Collection Study. 10.08, looking to approve a contract between, uh, the board and Stacy Goran, our new lawyer. Uh, Ms. Goran will represent the Oakland Board of Education as the school solicitor for the remainder of this year, um, ending at, uh, the, end of 2025 school year. 10.09, looking to approve the use of facilities for the OC Panthers basketball, to use the gymnasium on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, uh, starting in February and ending in May. 10.10, looking to approve the use of facilities, again, uh, for the Collinswood band director to hold indoor guard practices at the Oakland School Cafeteria on Thursdays from 5:30 to 8:30, beginning, um, that already began, um, back in, uh, November and ending in March of 2025. And 10, 11, looking to approve another use of facilities for the Oakland Little League to use the Oakland School Gymnasium and baseball field Monday through Fridays from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, uh, starting January 1st and ending, uh, March 31st. Uh, the facilities will be used to hold light indoor preseason practices and outdoor practices when the weather permits.
Thank you. Um, just a note on 10.11, we discussed this in committee, but there's a limited availability of the gym at the moment, um, so the, um, Little League would need to work with, uh, John Longo on when it would actually be available because of the other groups that have already been approved for that.
Yeah, and the notes on it did say when available, so.
Correct, yeah. Um, all right, is there a motion to approve 10.01 through 10.11?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and are there any other questions from board members about any of those items? And just a note, 10.08, um, came about from our discussions at the November board meeting, um, so the change would start as of January 1. All right, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tady?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushka?
Yes.
All right, section 11, this is curriculum and personnel. Ted.
All right, uh, and as Jimmy did, I'd also like to thank whomever it was that sat in for me Tuesday, as I had a heating, heating emergency at my house, so appreciate that. Um, so just a couple of items here. Item 11.01, uh, we're looking to approve our CUSAC district improvement plan, uh, that was provided by our assistant superintendent of instruction and curriculum, Meredith Halter. Uh, if you had a moment to look at that, it's, um, we're looking to increase proficiency in English language arts, math, and science. Um, also looking to update curriculum, uh, in ELA and, uh, the visual and performing arts. So we're looking to approve our CUSAC improvement plan there in item 11.01, and in item 11.02, we're looking to approve the following, um, substitutes, um, and nurses there. You see Emily Forchionne and Nicolette Rath. So, uh, just those two items, we're seeking approval on items 11.01 and 11.02.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, and any questions for board members?
Yes.
Yep.
I, I've received a note over the weekend that says the OSAC improvement plan will be uploaded later. Meredith is fine-tuning it. And we're going to approve it tonight?
That's the dip, right? That's the CUSAC improvement plan. It was attached, isn't it? Okay, all right.
So I'm sorry, say, say that again?
It's attached to the agenda.
It was uploaded, uh, earlier in the week, or last, probably in the last week, maybe?
It's item-
Well, okay, now, I, I missed it.
11.01.
About then, I guess this is from you that responded.
Well, you sent an email to a bunch of us, and I responded.
Yes.
And it is attached, it's 11.01.
It was attached?
It was uploaded in the board box, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I guess I missed it. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll miss it.
All right, uh, on a roll call.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
I'm staying on 11.01, yes, on 11.02.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tady?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schae, I'm sorry, I got you. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bushka?
Yes.
All right, moving on to section 12, uh, school community relations and policy committee. This is Teresa.
Uh, item 12.01 is the report from the Collinswood board. Mr. TV.
Thank you. Uh, we had our board meeting over in Collinswood last night. Um, just, uh, highlights and the board agendas were sent out to all board members, uh, so it's in your inbox. Um, just some updates of notes, um, Collinswood High School, uh, senior string quartet performed, they sounded fantastic, so it was great to, uh, kick off the meeting with some holiday We also discussed, uh, the, uh, public comment for, uh, the funding at the state level. Um, with the notes, I sent out a link to the, uh, broadcast memo from the Department of Ed that also has all the links, so if you're unable to, to find it on the website, um, you can just click on that link in my meeting notes, um, and access all the information there. It has all the dates, uh, for the month of January. Um, just some upcoming dates, uh, to keep in mind, uh, January 21st, uh, Collinswood Middle School PTA meeting, that's on Google Meet. Um, Snowball Dance is the, it's, uh, January 24th. Eighth grade open house is January 30th, and the end of the second marking period, uh, for Collinswood Middle School will be January 20th, or January 30th, rather. Um, and I believe that's, uh, that information will be a genesis as well. Dan Gurr, our representative, had some updates from the students. Um, this past month, we've had two bake sales to raise money, uh, for, uh, children in Gaza. Um, winter sports is officially in full swing. Um, he lamented, uh, smart passes and Wi-Fi being a little glitchy. Um, and reindeer games is coming up at the high school, which everybody's really excited about as well. Um, from the superintendent's report, uh, Collinswood Middle School made the news, uh, for, uh, our food pantry and all the work that they're doing there, so that was pretty exciting. Um, and then, uh, a lot of class trips being approved. Uh, choir, mock, mock trial, um, art students will be going to New York, uh, later in the school year, and the high school, uh, TV production and art students will be going to LA, so pretty, pretty cool stuff there. Um, so that's it from Collinswood.
Really quick note, no mention of the Freaky Friday play and, uh, musical that went off this weekend, which was freaking amazing.
All right, thank you. Um, item 12.02 is PT Lee's on report. Mrs. Rotondo.
Hi, everybody. So the last PTA meeting was on the 3rd of this month. Um, they reported that there are 134 members at this time. Ms. Bolden gave an administrative update that included a thank you to all the parent volunteers that helped during pitcher day and the fall classroom parties, and also reflected on the family fun night, that was a big hit. That was, like, November 22nd, and, um, there was an update in terms of the winter classroom parties that are going to take place this Friday, um, which is a full day of school. The room, room ambassador tried to, like, um, sorry about that. They encouraged everybody to follow the Facebook page for updates. The PTA does a nice job of keeping everybody current on the Facebook page. Past events included a pre-K and kindergarten family fun night. There was special Thanksgiving to Mrs. Zishido and Ms. Serena for leading cosmic yoga. Family fun night, again, there was like about 100 people that showed up for the first one one of the year. Everyone really had a nice time. The winter event was this past Saturday. The PTA Holiday Shop is going on this week. The fifth grade Promotion Committee is in full swing, they plan for an amazing year moving forward. Events and fundraisers are in the planning stages, with the most recent one being the And that is really kind of where I'm going to go with this in terms of a board update. Thank you.
When is the next meeting? January?
I don't know which date.
We're going to go to January. Lilo will let us know. Okay. Item 12.03 is the MSAC report. Mrs. Bushka.
So MSAC hosted a small but vibrant gym night on the 13th, last Friday, and Santa came to visit. They're working with Ms. Bolden to sponsor recognition for the Hawks Awards. They're also working with the high school on an assembly, and they've requested inclusion in the 25-26 grant application. I also asked, Adam, because a question came up in our committee, so MSAC hosts the men's basketball league, or I guess it's co-ed, over 30 basketball league on Tuesday nights, the Brittle Brothers. And a question was, what's their participation looks like? And he said it averages about 12 to 16 people a week, so good participation there. And Bill reminded us that that's been going on a long time, many years.
Long time, yeah.
Long time. And that's all.
Thank you. Item 12.04 is the Oakland Education Foundation. We have not met since our last meeting, but we will be possibly meeting tomorrow, or sometime soon, soon in the new year, to discuss recruiting new members. We have a really great, vibrant new group of new parents that, you know, I'm seeing a lot in the PTA, so just putting a public call out, anyone who wants to help. The Oakland Education Foundation, again, is a 501(c)(3) organization that can raise money for anything that the school district needs. So if anyone is watching or listening and wants to join, please reach out. Item 12.05 is a policy for second reading. It is 8467, the firearms and weapons revised. And then we have, item 12.06 is a regulation, we just do one reading, also it's the regulation for the policies, 8467 firearms and weapons. So we are seeking approval for items 12.05 through 12.06.
Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and you pick. Any questions from board members on any of those items? I can't hear anyone on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mrs. Fappell?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Rotondo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if you had more than two buttons, they don't work. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tady?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
I can hear you really well, now that the thing's not blowing. Mrs. Bushka?
Moving on to section 13, miscellaneous. We have nothing from the previous month, so there's nothing here. Section 14 is the last public comment section. This is for anything that you wish to bring before the board. Please stand and state your name. You can write your address on the paper, and keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Well, I did come to say, congratulations to Sydney, she's one of my good friends tonight, but I have something else. I figured I'll make a public comment, why not? So, so my name... So my name is Karen Williams, and I live at 211 East Meadowwood Avenue in Oakland. So first of all, I wanted to congratulate the Collinswood Middle School for their phenomenal rendition of Freaky Friday, which happened last weekend. The cast, crew, and teachers did an amazing job. My son, this year, my son Ethan Mercer is in eighth grade at Collinswood Middle School, and it was his first year participating in the show. Up until now, he has mainly focused on sports, but this year, he tried two new things. One, the school musical, and two, the school's chorus. And I started off with my appreciation for the Performing Arts Department, and I'd hate to have to shift to disappointment, but here I am. I wanted to express to you my sincere disappointment that there will be no in-person evening holiday concert this year to showcase the middle and high schools' band and chorus. Like I said, this year is the first year my son is in chorus. My daughter, who is in fourth grade at Oakland School, as well as the grandparents of my kids, were also shocked and disappointed that they will not be able to attend this performance. As I'm aware, the show was canceled due to a lack of a contract between the teachers' union and the administration. The taxpayers of Oakland are paying for our students to attend a school that has more than once canceled events due to the lack of a contract. I'm a GenSO union nurse, and my husband belongs to the United Academics Philadelphia Union, so we know about bargaining. But this has gone on too long. To the school board, I urge you to consider the fallout from the lack of a contract. When teachers cancel events like back-to-school night and performing arts shows, it creates division between the school, the kids, and the parents. To the Collinswood administration, we urge you to settle the contract for the sake of your students and their families.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else?